Our pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone.
You want me to de-roll call again?
Yeah.
Julie? Julie, are you here?
Thank you.
Lauren?
Lauren's here.
Shannon?
Shannon's here.
Andy?
I'm here.
Phil? Phil?
I'm here.
Myland?
This is Myland, I'm here.
All right.
Appreciate everyone being here. We'll go on now and we need a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. Do we have that?
I'll make that motion, this is Phil. Shannon second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this meeting of June 1st, 2020, and the consent agenda as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, thank you.
Mayor Cannon, sir, I'm having a real hard time hearing, I don't know if you can get the mic a little closer or something?
I've got it. Yes, you do it.
Is that better, Lauren?
Yes, thank you, well.
Be back, thank you. The next item on the agenda is presentations, and we have a presentation by John Bright on Bright on the request to sell fireworks. Mr. Bright, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, my name is John Bright, B-R-I-G-H-T. I am the secretary for the Golden Dale Alliance Club. And the last five or six years, the Golden Dale Alliance Club has been selling fireworks in conjunction with, I don't know the name this week, it was Red Apple Market, Market Fresh. And we are here again to request permission to use our permits that we have and permits to sell fireworks in the city. We have submitted fire marshal's permit and our insurance cover letter. I think that's all I need to say, I just need to know if you have any questions I can answer.
Very good. Before we, we're gonna need consensus from the council, and I can't see heads shake, so we'll have a roll call in a few minutes. But I want to remind everyone of the ordinance that has been passed by this council on fireworks for July 4th. It's legal to sell and purchase consumer fireworks within the city from 12 noon to 11:00 PM on June 28th, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM on each day from June 29th through July 4th, and from 9:00 to 9:00 PM on July 5th, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM on July 5th. Now these can only be used or discharged on July 4th from 6:00 PM through midnight. That's the most crucial part of this ordinance, is that these fireworks can only be used or discharged on July 4th from 6:00 PM through midnight. Connie, would you like to?
Okay.
It's not vote, but it's a consensus.
Yeah, consensus, Julie?
Thank you, Mayor, this is Julie, I have a question.
Okay. Did you say you had a question?
Well, that's what I did. I do have a question, is this a fundraiser for the Lions Club?
Yes, this is, in conjunction with the market. They are assisting us in this project.
Okay, thank you.
Do you concur, Julie?
I do.
Lauren?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Myland? Myland?
Yes, I forgot to turn my, uh...
Okay, thank you.
Good, then we have consensus to agree that the Golden Dale Alliance Club will be able to sell fireworks on those days that we read out, and that our local citizens are to only use them from 9, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, wait just a minute. Yeah, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM on July 4th.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
The Golden Dale Lions understand the ordinance that was passed by the city council. I believe we were under it last year also.
Yes, you were.
And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or if not, thank you very much for passing the resolution, or the permission.
The permission, yes. Thank you, Mr. Bright, appreciate you bringing it to us.
Then I will leave this and let you go on with other business, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, our department reports, and we'll begin with Reggie.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have a few things for tonight. First is over the weekend, as everybody knows, we had quite the windstorm that came through Golden Dale and this entire region. We had, I believe, four different trees that fell down during this windstorm. One of the main ones was at Columbus and Broadway, a tree went across that entire intersection with wires intertwined in that tree. We also had one in the 300 block of Garland, and that was a tree that also came down that had telephone wires on in it. The other two places were Northwest Second and Clickatatt, and Chatfield and Bergen also had trees that came down. There was no injuries, which we're happy to report, and I'd like to do a special thank you to the Golden Dale Fire Department. They were out and did an amazing job responding, helping the police department block intersections, and I don't know how we would have handled it without their assistance. And also, the Golden Dale Public Works Department was on scene almost immediately, and they came out and helped us clear the intersections with a back hose, and it was just very nice to see all of the city, different departments, working together during a kind of a quick crisis of wind like we had. And the last people I'd like to thank is the PUD, they came out and again were checking the wires for us, and assisted us with the wind and did a great job. The next thing I'd like to cover tonight is, this week is gonna be graduation for our seniors for the Golden Dale High School. The city and the police department have been working with the school district. As of right now, we do have a parade that is scheduled for this Thursday. It's gonna start at 5:30, and it's gonna do the regular parade route, which is gonna be leaving the Golden Dale High School and going on to Simcoe, and then it'll turn on to Columbus and go down to Main Street, and go onto East Main Street for one block, and then the parade will be over. Each of the seniors will be in their own car with a family member, and they're anticipating about 15 cars in the parade. And I know the school district would like a lot of community involvement, of people parking along that parade route, again wanting to do social distancing with people kind of staying in their cars, and I think this will be a really good event. We have the public works putting up the barricades, and the police department will be leading the parade and also blocking traffic. Right now, the school district is still working on the graduation, which they're hoping to do Friday night, and they're still trying to work out the details of the graduation. We did have one current case I'd like to bring to the council's attention. Last Thursday on May 28th, at about 5:20 in the morning, Officer Stelges and I responded to 1500 South Columbus on a domestic violence call that included a person being stabbed. Once on scene, it was determined that Jennifer Christensen had stabbed her husband in the hand with a knife. The husband received medical care and stitches. Right now, the Golden Dale Police Department has submitted charges to the Clickatatt County Prosecuting Attorney's Office for felony assault in the second degree. So that has been pretty much one of our only major cases that we have been having lately. Things have still been pretty busy for welfare checks, and, but overall, things have been really good in the police department. And the last thing I'd like to mention tonight is, I'd like to thank everybody who has sent notes and who has talked to me yesterday and today, given encouragement to the police department for the events and the riots that have been happening over the weekend. The Golden Dale Police Department is extremely thankful for the community that we are privileged to be able to serve, and I'd like to personally thank all of the officers of the Golden Dale Police Department and our surrounding law enforcement agency partners that we get to deal with. They are very high class, and because of the Golden Dale Police Department's high level of training and the commitment that we have to de-escalation, our use of force incidents are extremely low inside the city of Golden Dale. And this year, in 2020 so far, we've only had six use-of-force incidents within the police department, which most of them are counter-joint techniques, which means that we use very little use of force in the police department, and I contribute that to officers being able to use their voices and to give voluntary compliance instead of us having to go hands-on with people. And I think we're very, again, very thankful for the officers that we have and the good common sense that they're able to use. And Mayor, with that, that's all I have for tonight.
Very good, thank you, Reggie. I don't think we ever realize how great our, both our fire department and our police department are, how well-trained they are, and how conscientious they are in serving the people of Golden Dale. We're very, very fortunate for that. Noah Hall, our fire department fire chief, is not here tonight. Other than cutting those trees, I'm not sure what all they were doing, but they didn't seem to have a really hype incident weekend, I don't believe. The next item, we don't have council business or resolutions or ordinances. The next item is report of officers, the city administrator and the mayor. We'll begin with Larry.
Okay, I just wanted to report to the council that all the documents that are required to be filed through the Clickatatt County Planning Department regarding the airport improvements have been submitted and are now in processing, are in review and in processing. The documents include a CEPA checklist, conditional use application, and other requirements that are required by the Department of Commerce. So that project is moving forward, and it's taken a good step forward on hopefully getting the fuel system up and running at the airport. But these were some key documents and a key deadline that was met. In the public works department, oh, before I go to the public works department, I will mention that we did have an incident out at the airport. A liflight plane or helicopter became disabled on the runway with a couple of flat tires. And so, we were able to, I was able to get notice through a flight service that we are part of to issue a notice to airmen, which is sometimes called the NOTAM. And this notice advises pilots in the area that there may be an issue when you are trying to land at the Golden Dale Airport. So we were able to get that NOTAM issued and a warning out to any pilots that were trying to land during that time they were trying to fix the plane. They were able to fix, get the plane towed over to the tie-down area and come back later and get it fixed. But I want to give a shout-out to Noah Hall, he was able to, since I was out of town at the mall at that particular timeframe, I think it was Friday night, Noah actually went up to the airport and checked it out, and lo and behold, there was a plane in the runway. So anyway, thanks to him and for the quick work on the part of the liflight to get it out of the runway area. In public works, the focus has been to try to get the weeds all sprayed and the flower pots maintained. In both situations, you can't work very well on those items unless there's no wind. So we've had our share of wind this year, so it's gonna, we're still working on getting the spraying done, we're still trying to work with getting those flowers maintained and bushed out, but the wind is just taking its toll. So you have to, we'll keep working at it, and we'll get through it. Park maintenance is also a high priority for the crew. And then in the, in the next couple of weeks, we want to, we plan on doing some pothole patching with cold mix, and then the hot mixes will be later in July, followed by striping in July. So we've got, we're in full swing at the public works department. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor.
I forgot to remind everybody to put your phones on mute. Thank you.
Okay, the next part of the report of officers is the council, and any council member that wants to discuss something that citizens are asking them about or something they have a question about, please just call out your name and then go ahead. On mute.
Somebody's still not on mute, I can hear you rattling around.
So this is Shannon. I've seen where Lisa Mayberry said that, um, that a air conditioning unit go out at the shelter. Would we have any money we could put towards Larry, getting another air conditioner out there?
No problem, I'll take care of that tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Poor doggies.
This is Phil.
Okay, Phil.
I just want to give a shout-out to Golden Dale Police Department. Given that they, you know, they, she talked about the training that they have, which is great and improves on everything, having a perspective on larger and more, larger communities and communities with different problems, I wanted to give them a shout-out also for their community involvement, and it plays a significant role, especially in situations that we're seeing around the country, that our officers are involved through community events, and one of them has a close relationship with our community members. And that plays a huge role, not every community can say that their officers play that significant role, and I think that that makes a bigger difference than just their training, is the quality and the quality of persons that we have working for the city.
Thank you, Phil. Anyone else with a comment or question?
Yes, Mike, this is Andy, I have a couple of things, actually. To add to the liflight issue up there on the airport, through Noah, my dad and I actually went up there and helped. Also a shout-out to Martin at Les Schwab that brought a jack up there that actually helped them more, my dad and I tried to help them, but our jack didn't work. But it also made me realize I had never been out there on the airport, out there. And I knew there was issues, but to go out there and actually see some of the issues out there, it's, our airport needs some help, and I support the airport committee, and I hope that, you know, in the future we can get some things, more things done out there. Lastly, Larry, this is a question about, oh, I think it was two meetings ago, had talked about the found use in the laundry mat. Were you able to find anything for a washer and dryer out there for them?
I've asked our public work supervisor Doug Frantum to look at that issue, and he's gone out and taken some measurements, and he's doing some research for installing a water washer and a dryer out there at the animal shelter. So that's what I'm working on right now, is to try to get something out there that they can use to just do it right there at the animal shelter.
Okay, great, thanks, Larry.
You got it, thanks, Andy. Anyone else?
Mayor, this is Julie.
Yes, Julie.
I just wanted to thank the county's Department of Health for their work on getting the variance for opening the county to the Phase 2, to the state reopening plan, that that was approved today. I'd also like to make it known that we did have five new cases since yesterday in the county, so it's definitely not over by any means, and I hope that people are still taking precautions like they should be. That's all I have.
Thanks, Julie. Anyone else? If not, I have one announcement, and then I'd like to talk about COVID-19 for a minute. The announcement is that Councilwoman Jane Roberts has resigned. She and her husband have bought a home outside of Golden Dale and realized that they were outside of the area where she could stay on the council. So she resigned over the weekend. She's been a great counselor, I sent her a letter, I think I sent it to everyone, so everyone had it, if not, I'll do it if you haven't gotten it. But Jane has been a very good member of our council, and we're gonna miss her, and we'll be starting the process to find an additional member of council to replace her. On the second item, it has to do with COVID-19. And as you heard Julie say, and Julie and Phil really have the knowledge firsthand from the 911 center, but we have, we're up now to 29 cases. Doesn't mean we've had any more deaths, and that these are all confirmed policies yet, I don't believe. But they're, for the most part, they're from outside Golden Dale, and that's a relief for us, we had a number of cases early on in Golden Dale. So our social distancing and those efforts are beginning to show in a good way. Now what I wanted to talk about on COVID-19, it's exciting that we're at Phase 2. Julie completely stole my thunder on that one. But we're really happy.
I apologize, man.
It's okay, that's all right. Wait until you hit stage three. But there's certain things that we still need to keep up. I'm gonna go through the differences in Phase 2 from Phase 1, but the main things to remember is the social distancing, to try every way possible to be six feet away from anyone else. This helps protect you, and it helps to protect them from any kind of virus that's coming. We recommend that you wear a mask whenever you're around other people, particularly if you're closer than six feet, and when you're in stores such as grocery stores, it's a good idea to wear a mask. For those of you who are feeling sick, just don't feel well, stay home. Don't come to work if you're not feeling well, and we'll be able to keep the virus far more in check if we do that, I believe. It's an incredibly contagious disease, and it's very, very hard to avoid it. And there's special efforts are being made for the older citizens in town who have underlying conditions, and you're listening to one of them right now, and he's very interested in this part of preventing anybody getting COVID. But our health department's working hard on this, our emergency operations center is working very hard, and we can do this, we've almost, we've had quite an achievement to get to Phase 2. We are following, as far as the guidance, over the next two weeks, we're gonna be working on developing a policy to be able to come out of Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, when everything starts to open back up, public offices especially. And so, we're following the MRSC, that's a state agency that has to do with law issues. They are laying out a very careful plan for counties to come out of the restrictions, the stay-at-home plans, and we're also, Larry's been in touch with our Washington County Insurance Agency, that WCIA, and that had to do with the situation in our parks. The parks in Golden Dale, parks in Clickatatt County are open, but the bathrooms are not, those are locked because of the necessity of being able to go in and clean those anytime anybody has gone in or is going in. So it's something that's, we'll eventually get to that point, but it'll be probably at Stage 4. But right now, the parks are open, we hope you go out and enjoy them in this beautiful weather. But plan ahead if you're gonna need any kind of restroom. I wanted to go through just one more thing, this has to do with the Phase 2 differences. The program of staying home and staying healthy, it continues, but now there's outdoor recreation involving five or fewer people outside your household for camping, for beaches, for things of that nature. On gatherings, there can be no more than five people outside your household per week. That's a pretty tough one. When we get to Phase 3, it goes 10 times higher than that, so it's worth working for. The next item has to do with travel, and we know that a number of us have had to have essential travel for picking up medications and things. Non-essential travel is also allowed, but it needs to be carefully monitored that we aren't abusing the privilege of being able to do some of that travel. Now the businesses that are gonna be affected in a positive way on Phase 2, the remaining manufacturing and additional construction phases are open. In-home domestic services, that's nannies and housekeepers or anything of that nature. Retail, in-store purchases are allowed with restrictions. Real estate will be open, professional services, office-based businesses, telework remains strongly encouraged. On professional services, that's the office-based businesses, that's gonna probably go much, much longer than anything else that we're gonna have to deal with in this COVID situation. One that'll be a real relief to both men and women is that hair and nail salons and barber shops can open, they may not open, but they can, and it'll be up to them. Pet grooming, that shaggy dog next door, probably will get a haircut now. And restaurants and taverns will be allowed to have up to 50% capacity at tables with no more than five to a table. Now I'll send this all to you in one of these emails, and let me explain a little bit, because the last time we had city council, I promised I was gonna keep you updated on all of the announcements, and I provided a nice little group with all the council members on there, and I was doing that one at a time, and probably everybody got some of the early ones, but then I made this group on my computer, and I looked today to see why nobody had even asked about them, and they all just went to me. So we'll be bringing you up to date on all the announcements for Phase 2 onward, and if you want any of the old ones, be happy to find them, you just... You just let me, let me know what you want. I hope those are chuggers. Those are the things I have. I appreciate everybody's patience with dealing with the restrictions on the whole process of data with COVID-19. We'll now go to public comment. And if the council has questions on what I was reporting, you can go ahead and ask that as well. But right now, we'll ask for public comment as well.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Roger Nichols. I just am curious how the construction is going on the new county building.
They're doing a lot of foundation work. I haven't heard any reports of how much progress they were making, but they seem to be working steadily there. That was considered an essential construction, but all other kinds of construction now can open up and get going.
Thank you. I'm just being able to see what's going on in town. Thank you so much.
You bet. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Okay.
Do we have other public comments?
Sounds like somebody's in love. Whoop, whoop, whoop.
I hope nobody dropped their phone in the water. If we don't have public comment, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
This is Andy. It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn city council for June 1st, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next meeting will be on June 15th, and it will be a virtual meeting. Thanks, everyone.